Michelle, can I do it by Zoom? You ready, Mark?
Yep.
Everybody else? We'll start by doing the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we'll call the order. The agenda for the council meeting, city council meeting for April 12, 2022, call to order. Role call is Council Mary Ryan. Mary Bailey. Dan Regico.
Here.
Kim Helgason.
Here.
Don Henke. Here. City Administrator Mark Balsing. City Attorney Scott Riggs.
Here.
City Attorney Derek Olander.
Here.
Assistant Administrator Holly, we're here in the corner, I know. Here. Still believing us in here, Public Works Director Wayne Eric. Kathy from Finance, and we do have various other guests here tonight. So, we will start by having citizens' comments. Would you like to? Bring that up, Todd? Todd, I will say this much, I do see you out very frequently around the county. Certainly is appreciated, and I will tell you this much, yeah, we like the stepchild often there. And I know that you're banging heads trying to make these people down a little bit further east. Understand that we are part of the county, we bring in money called taxes which we're going to be paying. So. Keep hammering away, that's all I could say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll adopt the agenda. That will be the, is there any changes on that, Mark?
No, there's no like official change, um, one thing AJ is not going to be able to present tonight.
That's what I've got here.
Yeah, but you don't have to change the agenda.
Okay. He'll bring it over in May, I guess. Okay.
So, well.
So, we have.
Make a motion?
No, and do the consent, or, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as it is.
I'll second.
Okay, motion been made, second to adopt the agenda as is, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass. Okay, we can do the next three year consent agenda. Approval of the minutes and appointments. And financial, we can do all at one time if we wish. Unless there's some discussion on it.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second that, um, any more discussion on it? If not, all those in favor of, of the consent agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass, okay. By the way, we are going to try to speed this up tonight. A little bit for the fact that there is weather and there is gentleman, most of you have, uh, ways to travel, so we want to get you home. So, we're going to try to speed it up. Okay, presentations, public hearings, recognition, platformations, that we will pass on since. Nobody here okay for it. We'll move on then to engineering and, uh, city engineer, Derek Olander.
Sure. Uh, so first thing on the agenda, uh, is a couple of pools, proposals for some sanitary sewer televisings related to the 2023 sanitary sewer project that we're planning right now, um, so this televising is part of the data collection associated with that. Uh, we received three proposals, it's, as written, um, the recommended to, uh, proceed with the Empire Pipe Services proposal and the amount of 12,782. If approved, that cost would eventually be wrapped into the total project financing package, um, later on. Any questions with that?
Yeah.
It's specialty work, um, not everyone has the equipment that's needed to do this. Um, so I have multiple contractors that just didn't submit, uh, because they either didn't have the equipment or they didn't think that they would have a competitive number, um, so they just didn't submit, so these are the three that we did get them from.
Is that why the number is so big, because maybe they'd have to buy some equipment to get it done and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
With some people, what they have, the, the equipment takes quite a bit of time just to set up in itself.
Sure.
And if they're not already working it in with another project, it's just not cost effective.
Now, is, um, I was down there and went in as far as what I could actually go in a way about a couple of weeks ago. There was a question about being able to televise the whole thing, are you going to split it up somehow? Or they're going to go in various, are they going to have access to go into, uh, locations to do the televising, or?
That's, that's the, there's two locations that they need the specialty equipment, it's basically off-road equipment, um, that they can get back to some of those manholes back further into the woods.
Yeah.
Um, and once they can get into there, which they need this equipment for, um, then they, they should be able to televise all of it that we need to, that we haven't televised already.
Because I know when you go in from down, uh, off of Highway 6056, you know, follow on in.
Yeah.
And there's a manhole way up here, I know. And that is, at the end, nobody's cut the trees and everything, so it's beyond that then, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Yeah, so we're, is there anything else you want?
Nope, that was it, yeah, just looking for a motion accepting the proposal from Empire Pipe.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal for sanitary. Empire Pipe Services.
Yeah.
An amount of 12,782 dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I will second it.
Okay, any more discussion on it? Motion been made and second to, uh, accept the proposal for Empire Pipe Services of North Mankato for 12,782 dollars and sixty-eight cents. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, pass.
Okay, uh, so next thing I have here are proposals for the 2022 chip seal project. Um, so in, uh, 2020, we put together an infrastructure management plan for the city to look at the various needs related to infrastructure, and part of that was basically basic maintenance of the streets. Uh, and with what we're talking about here, it's the good conditioned streets. Um, we do things like chip sealing and crack filling of those streets, we can make sure that those streets that are in good condition. Um, so every year, um, since then, the city's been budgeting annually for this type of activity. For this year, what's budgeted, what's budgeted is about 60,000. Um, we put together the project scope based on what we think that pricing is going to be. Uh, in this particular case, we've gotten two proposals, uh, one of them, the 44,700, and the other one for 58. The low proposal from Pearson, we've had no issues with them in the past on this type of, uh, on this type of work, and that would be the recommendation to proceed with, with them. So, uh, if that sounds okay, the only other decision point would be, um, do we ask Pearson to do more work? Uh, because the, the amount of work that we have proposed right now is just, it's a portion of many more streets that need to be done in years to come. So, yeah, again.
More to get us up to the 60,000 budget.
Yep. Do you want to use what was budgeted, or do you want to just, you know, approve this, the scope of work?
And, I mean, do we have to decide that today?
Um, that would be good, that would be good to decide it, it would just, that second piece would just be giving staff direction to work.
More, like, just once they get done, they can kind of keep going until they're up to that budget.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, because we're given a unit price, it's a unit price contract, um, we just ask them to do additional work at that price, which.
I mean, that's budgeted for that market, I mean, we don't, we don't need to save that money for anything, right?
No, no, Wayne, are you, we're trying to agree with that?
Yeah, I wanted to talk to Wayne.
We gotta, we figure it would take seven years to, whoever that, oh.
And from your perspective, you can easily, like, get us up to that 60,000 and just plan out from there.
Yeah. We would just work with them and tell them, you know, to just treat the street, uh, until you're up to that 60,000 number.
Yeah.
Go with that, with, what they have in their, in their proposal here is a unit price, you can easily add to it.
But they'd be working with Wayne to find out what streets are the worst then?
Yeah, we already have a list kind of together, um, that'll show, you know, each year's projects coming up, so we just kind of start from the bottom and.
We kind of raised that off. Inside, you tried to, so this year we're wanting extra, but we have that part.
Uh, for those that are listening in, Derek, would you explain to, uh, the people, the reasons for going ahead with Trunion? Being it has good streets, it's, you explained before, it's best to take care of what you got as the best. As you downgrade a little bit, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, this is kind of part of our, uh, look with that infrastructure management plan, so kind of the, the method of years past, um, would be to take your worst conditioned street and address them with a very expensive reconstruction project and pay very little attention to your good conditioned streets because they're in good condition, why would you have to do anything with them? Um, we're kind of flipping that, uh, flipping that over, uh, if you look at the, uh, costs, uh, associated with the lifetime of a street. Uh, what's more cost effective is to, um, do the necessary maintenance activity for those good conditioned streets so that they remain in good condition for years to come, and that they don't more quickly fall into a state of disrepair that would require a more expensive, uh, you know, reconstruction or overlay type of project. Um, so that's what we're trying to do, do with all of these, uh, streets that we're considering good condition, just trying to keep them in good condition, because this, this type of project that we're talking about here right now is relatively low cost in comparison to an overlay project or reconstruction.
I think with the way prices are going, we want to take advantage of as much of this chip sealing as we can now.
Yeah.
So, I'll move, um, that we approve the bid from Pearson Brothers Incorporated and authorized staff to increase the amount of work up to the budgeted amount of 60,000 dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion on it? Those in favor of the motion that was made by Dan Regico, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, pass, okay. Wayne, I do have a question for you, I know you do every spring, uh, when it comes to the pothole end, have you talked to that individual, have you? Hey, yeah, okay, so. How much? How, how much have you actually got, uh, figured out that you're going to be able to get this year, meaning area-wise? Yeah. Yeah, it's, it certainly has worked in the years past, so. Incidentally, for those people that are listening on Second Street here, uh, there's a couple of nice potholes out here on the main, I know that belongs to the state, correct?
Yes.
Have you talked to them about it at all?
I think we didn't say it, but we are waiting for them off. So, yeah, they know, they, they drive through every day.
Yeah. Do something we think we can do?
I can, we can call the guys.
Okay. Well, you'll do your best, I know, so thank you. Okay, is there anything else under, uh, engineering that you wish to bring up, Derek?
That was it, thank you.
That's it, okay. Well, then we can start on to another one here, and that will be legal, so Attorney Riggs, you want to get started?
I will, thank you, you have, uh, six items on legal, five are very straightforward, we'll have a little more discussion about C probably, but I'll start with AMA, which is Resolution 2022-11, it's dealing with the America Recovery Act funds, and this adoption of this resolution by the council, um, will provide the most flexibility and it kind of documents the process for what we're doing here for the 200, $206,000 that are available to the city. It will give Mark the most flexibility, essentially means there's really no strings attached, and you can use it for whatever you need to. There are a few provisions you can't, you can't use it for legal settlements and to do anti-COVID type things, which that's what Congress put in the act, you, you can't do, well, essentially those couple of things you can't do, and everything else is on, uh, on and available for you to spend these dollars on. So, with that, I recommend adopting that resolution, so you allow the most flexibility for expenditures.
Well.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-11, Ron and Maris local. I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? Okay, there's motion been made, second for Resolution 2022-11, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, pass. Got that one out there.
Yep, item B is Resolution 2022-13, it is approving a joint powers agreement with the state and the Jacobson Law Firm, who does the prosecution for the city. It is something you have done in the past, it allows the utilization of the state's, uh, database, uh, charging BCA documents, uh, et cetera. The chief may have further discussion on that or information, but again, it's something you've done in the past, we do it every few years, and it's recommended to adopt so we can continue with the appropriate prosecution for the city.
Any questions on? Anybody have? I'm going to make the motion then for Resolution 2022-13.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and second. Is there any more discussion on it? If not, all of those in favor of Resolution 2022-13, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, pass, okay.
Item C, as I noted earlier, is the Metronet Franchise Letter Agreement, in essence, it's really not a franchise, what it is, is a letter agreement that allows for internet access to be provided to the community. Originally, Metronet had proposed that there be video service also provided, which would have required a franchise agreement. They are no longer doing that, what you have before you in this letter agreement is essentially what they've utilized with a number of other communities in the state. Um, it does not provide video, it only provides internet type service, which, again, a lot of people get video service over the internet anyways. I know Mark's had some discussions with the Metronet folks, um, but, you know, unless you see or, or, uh, believe there's some item or we should be getting additional fees, which the 2,500 dollars that are called for in here relative to, to street openings and our right-of-way ordinance is very low, keep that in mind, but it is what other communities have signed. So, unless you want us to go back and try to do something with that, it is recommended, if you want this other provider here for video server, excuse me, for internet services, to allow staff to enter into this agreement.
I'm, I'm just like kind of confused, so is it like just another internet service?
Yeah.
That's always just another competitor.
It is, it's another competitor, it's another way to get, and they're calling it high-speed internet service.
Okay.
Won't be video, but you still can get video over that service, so they're, they were going to provide like a cable service as well, they're no longer providing that, that's the difference.
But a lot of people don't do that so much.
Exactly, they do it over the internet anyway, so that's kind of why it's, yeah, that's fine. However, you cannot have a franchise agreement for that situation, nor do you get franchise fees when it's only internet service. If it was video, you would have a franchise agreement. So, keep that in mind, we can't do a franchise agreement that imposes a franchise fee because it is only internet service.
So, the, the fees that we put in this ladder were based on, um, we looked at the lineal fee that they would be directly pouring. And they're also, so the 2,500 is based on, because the city has a right-of-way permit that we require utilities to fill out for individuals or whatever, they're going to bury things on the right-of-way. And so, we, we did this as, based on the estimated fee that they gave us, that they would be installing through most of the community, and the other thing is that they're going to do aerial installation where there's poles right now, and so there's a separate pole agreement with KMU.
Yep.
And that's based on what KMU charges, so the fees should be, I think, right in line with what they should be, what we should be charging. And with the video out of there now, you know, it takes out that franchise part of it, but I think this is a, you know, reasonable agreement, and it's what they've used in other cities around us or other cities. Um, so, and we, we've gotten a lot of feedback from residents that would like to see more options for high-speed internet, so. Um, and they're basically saying they're going to come in and do the whole city, we, you know, we don't know how long, how they're going to schedule that, but um, it's kind of a first time thing since Charter and Frontier, how many years ago, put in fiber and phone lines? So, I mean, it's kind of a big deal, I guess, but, um, we came up with the fees last year, the end of 20, when we sat down and they gave us a map kind of showing where they would, would underground or the feet, the lineal feet that they would run, and then we based the 2,500 on that, and I think that's a little bit higher than what it would actually probably cost, I think we were talking closer to 2,000, and the rest of it is going to be aerial.
Yeah, that's right, those fees aren't in this one, and that's true, that's, that's in the KMU agreement.
Yeah, so, and KMU said they're going to charge on what they charge everybody else, and they didn't have a, much of that didn't have an issue with that, so.
So, KMU has approved it, that, because it wasn't this one that they were concerned about which poles would go on in that.
They did, yeah, approved a poll agreement with them last year.
Yeah, and there's some language in this agreement as well, that if there's problems with that, they have to work with the city and KMU. So, no, with, with that and with Mark's comments, I don't see the agreement changing from, uh, the perspective of Metronet, and I think it is something you can certainly approve at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your input on it. Counsel, have any more discussion?
You just need a motion? Oh, I will make a motion to approve Metronet Franchise Letter Agreement.
I have a second.
Okay. Motion been made, second, Metronet Franchise Letter of Agreement, all of those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, pass, okay.
And do is a straightforward agricultural land lease agreement, uh, it's a continuation of one you have in place right now. Um, it does increase, I think, the fees a little bit in, uh, the second and third year of the agreement. Um, it's the same language you, you've used before on other leases, so again, uh, straightforward recommendation to approve this.
I talked to Scott last week on it, and he had already, um, put down fertilizer from last fall, and he definitely is interested in running it, he says it's not a high-producing, but he says it is a good average, and he's looking forward to improving it as he goes along, so that's why for that three years, you're looking forward to, uh, to doing that, so.
He's been a good leaser, hasn't he, Wayne?
Yeah.
We've had three different people running that in the last five years, and it's kind of varied our experience with them, but, yeah, the, Scott's done a good job, so.
The only thing that he had said was, um, you know, getting, uh, heavy equipment in at the combine and, uh, tractors and stuff like that is off of the highway. But, uh, that goes on all over, so that was his main concern about it, and, uh, probably I have to take down a little more, uh, of the branches and that around, so there's a little more clear opening in, but, uh, he had no problem with that, so. Okay.
All right.
Any discussion? I said what I wanted to.
Okay, then we just need a motion again?
Yep, you bet.
Okay, a motion to, um, approve the agricultural land lease renewal for Scott Wickham.
I'll second that one. Any more discussion, if not? Motion been made and second then for the agriculture land lease renewal for Scott Wickham for 22 to 24, all in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Item E is approval of a caterers permit for on-sale intoxicating liquor, uh, Second Street Saloon, uh, doing business as Lacy's. Uh, again, straightforward, something you have done similarly, similarly in the past, sorry about that, um, so it is recommended you approve this caterers permit.
I'll move approval of the caterers permit for Second Street Saloon LLC.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? Not, motion been made and second. For the Second Street Saloon LLC, doing business as Lacy's, K R D, caterers permit, on sale intoxicating liquor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, pass.
Mark, I just have a que, I mean, are, is that building? Are they kind of leasing that? Building, or is that just, we can rent, it's still rentable?
Um, well, they're, they're doing, uh, Well, they're, they're doing kind of a test run.
Oh, okay.
And if it works.
Then maybe.
He told me that, yeah, they would look at doing more events there in the future, and maybe look at a, kind of a longer-term lease arrangement.
Sure.
But this right now is just kind of a test run, they're gonna kind of see what goes.
Okay.
Very temporary.
But it's encouraging, yeah.
Yeah. You bet.
Okay. Item F is the Kenyan Fire Relief Association's request to conduct lawful gambling bingo at the municipal liquor store. We have to approve a resolution, so you have resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen before you, to allow this type of charitable gambling to go on. Again, you've done it many times in the past, just a different group, so it's recommended for approval, to approve the resolution so they can move forward with charitable gambling at the county.
Now, this is only for gambling site.
Yes.
How often is it?
Once, twice a month.
Once or twice a month?
No, we're just starting off once a month.
Have you, did?
Only, yeah.
Yeah. Have you got any dates set on?
We don't have any dates yet, it's still a more process of once a year. So, and, 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 of course, the start of each day. One that's out, I start applying.
Anybody got any discussion on it, right, how about you? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, approving the application for lawful gambling of Kenyan.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made, second for resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, approving the application for lawful gambling of Kenyan Fireman's Relief Association. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, passed.
Nothing further, no.
Okay, well, thank you, Attorney Riggs.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're moving on. Old business, item A, is there something on there?
Nope.
Nothing? Okay. Okay, then we're going to new business. New business will be Police Department, twenty twenty-two Ford Interceptor, and do you wish to speak on that, Chief? Or Mark, whoever.
No, go ahead.
You're, you're more familiar with it than all of us are.
Okay, so we're about two items ahead here, man. Yeah, so the next item under new business, the first item is to declare first responder truck as excess inventory, so. Just give me one second. Well, the financials, that's just.
Brother consent.
That's. All this is in, we got this in different order.
Yeah, that's my, I was gonna say, I think you do.
Okay, well, anyway, don't worry, right, go, go for it.
Right, so, then it's a little more squad, but it's long. Um, I shouldn't, wasn't, so, it would turn assisted. Um. Fortunately, I was a little. That process, we had to replace that routine, it's all about. Um. Looking at another option to pop the unit squad. Yeah, with the first one, I think. Not, there was a lot. So, in the meantime, we might be able to get that. On site, where they're, what you're part, have signs with, which is not, next week, call back. We got, I believe, kind of, up time in mind. Two, five, house. Um, if we turn, break work, but just get it, hold it, get, awesome, control it. Also. Of, kind of, of, action.
Mark. Would you explain, you know, how it's being paid?
Okay, so.
Somewhere along the line here, I'm it's not a part of my.
If it, um, the order of what was on the agenda in order, what is a little bit different than what's in Granicus, so.
Okay.
If you go back to Granicus' agenda, you'll see, that's listed, I think, as the third item.
On the other one, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, so, the Ford, the twenty twenty-two, the total price, base price of that unit is thirty-six thousand four thirty-four. The cost to equip the unit would be twelve thousand four ninety-seven, so the total cost is forty-eight thousand nine thirty-one. And so I would recommend, as far as paying for it, breaking it down based on the following, we have seventy-five hundred dollars from the sale of the twenty-fourteen S U V squad back in February, I believe, or March. That thirteen thousand, which now is probably closer to fourteen-five from the insurance settlement of the total squad. And then we have seven thousand dollars in the twenty-two budget, I would also recommend pointing towards this. And then I would take the remaining approximately twenty-one thousand, maybe a little bit less than that, out of the COVID money that we got last year, we had a hundred and three thousand last year, we're gonna get a hundred and three this year. So I would recommend using the remaining, taking the remaining amount out of that, that way we don't have any lease or any you don't have to take it out of capital, and I think it's a appropriate, very appropriate use for that COVID money, so, public safety is, so.
And Attorney Riggs has approved of it, that we can use that money.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm certainly in favor, at the day that it happened, the accident, you know, with the car and everything else going south, if you wanna call it that way, actually, it's turning out pretty good for us now, we're really updated with the latest on, on that particular one, do you know when we're going to pick it up?
We already have it.
Oh, okay, I didn't, when did it come in then? Oh, okay. Then you'll have to go and get it, the graphics sound and everything, or is that done already?
All done.
Oh, okay, that's great. Right after. Okay, Chief.
They don't all move that fast.
I can make a plug for Trunion project, my daughter and I missed that accident by, it could not be more than twenty minutes because we left to go pick my son up, and by the time I came back, we could not get back on the Trunion, there was a long list, there was quite a weight of cars that had to wait for the entire scene to go down, so that's my plug again, for another accident, Trunion, because it could have been much worse, I mean, it all turned out good, but, yes, they're waiting for, oh. There you go.
Okay, any more discussion on it? Done, okay, well, we need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to purchase the twenty-two Ford Interceptor.
You're going big time, aren't you?
I'll second it.
Okay, well, we have a motion made in second for Police Department, a twenty twenty-two Ford Interceptor, all, we got it already, but all, now we gotta pay for it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes, passed, okay, now you can drive it. Okay, we'll go on to the next one then, would be a resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve in support of Minnesota State House filed twenty twenty-eight twenty-one, and Minnesota State Senate filed twenty-six seventy, which is a radio communication, that one there, we also got.
Yeah, it's not, I see that, it's, it didn't get uploaded.
Okay.
All right, so basically, this is just a resolution asking Goodhue County to in support of asking Goodhue County to, you, or apply state, for statewide public safety radio communication system equipment grant, so this is a pretty, pretty what's the word I'm looking for, it's a, a good thing to support, you know, it's a pretty benign kind of, you know, request, but all the cities are, are asking Goodhue County to apply for this funding. So, anyway, that's what the resolution is for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Stop to recommend approval of that.
I have one question, no, reading through on all of that, Wayne, you can answer it for me, or one of you from the Fire Department. When it said portable radios, actually, I think you had nine that you requested? When Mango had twelve, what's the difference?
So why we, last, different amount, Cannon Falls didn't have a lot either, but like, one of Mango had more, Goodhue had more.
Was that the original time we got?
I think so, or maybe we've updated some of them since then, because didn't we buy some radios last year? We used some of the COVID money.
We did buy, we got four last year. We bought.
Yeah, we used COVID money last year by
Is that?
That's why we're not, we don't need as many as some of the other cities.
That was last year.
Yeah.
What we bought. You guys have bought it. It's just the way the dollar, we worked out.
You know, obviously, we're close ones, and we just.
I'm just trying to think, so. We probably have sixteen.
That are up to, current, up to date?
No, four.
Just four?
We have four, but right now, I think we have at least sixteen total. Plus, three or four.
They're gonna be phased out, though. Okay. You know, we got.
So, go ahead.
We got somebody here listening, Commissioner, do you have something to put in on that?
Well, we originally started with the I R P dollars, that's what we wanted, that was my.
Yeah. Yeah, I got the, the email from him also, but in your opinion, do you think it's gonna fly? Okay, thank you.
I think we at least have to try.
Yes.
If we don't send a resolution of support, then they're gonna say, well, they don't even care, so.
Yeah.
statewide public safety radio communications.
Okay, is there any more discussion on it, we'll move on then.
Well, I'll move approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve in support of the legislation for funding for new radio equipment.
I'll second it.
Okay. You got something?
Well, this is resolution, resolution twenty-two dash thirteen.
Wonderful, I'll change it to thirteen then. I don't actually have it on Granicus.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, so I'll go with, yeah, whichever resolution it is for the equipment, let's go with it.
This is for resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen.
Whichever one will help get the legislature to respond for new radio equipment. You guys figured out the number, right?
Okay. Well, you don't know, I'm gonna bring it up then. Either or, how about that?
Yeah.
We're gonna go with it, Holly, you straighten it out, okay? All of those in favor of motion been made in second for resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve or thirteen, whichever. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's passed, Holly, can you get it straightened out? Okay. Okay, the next one on here is to declare old first responder truck as excess inventory. Would one of you, or Mark, wanna speak up on that?
So we received our new first responder truck, as of well, we got it put together, city service, we're using it. So we, we talked about it a minute, uh, money to go ready to sell a whole one. Best thing. We talked to Kevin, and he thought we'd get the poles banned for, put it on the hard sill. So we're actually, law filter, so we're gonna clean it up, take pictures, the poles that are live.
I make a motion to approve the declaring of old first responder truck as excess.
Okay, any more discussion on it, if not? Most have been made, second to declare the old first responder truck as excess inventory, all of those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next one. Kenyan Country Club requests for city approval to conduct a goose egg nest removal on the golf course. You guys read the letters that were in, and I have talked to Todd Ingelstedt on this here. And I think the letter is pretty explanatory as to what they're doing, it isn't, they're not gonna get rid of all of the grease, but they're trying to hold the population down, and he explained the procedure. And that has been something, I believe, the golf course, from what I gather, is ninety-five years here. So it's something that we need to look at too, for or so, okay? I'm gonna make the motion on that.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, most been made in second for the. Okay, most been made in second for the Kenyan Country Club request for city approval of to conduct goose egg nest removal on the golf course. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, pass. Okay, VFW liquor license renewal.
Well, this is just the annual renewal of the liquor license for the VFW. On sale, full liquor on sale, and then Sunday sales.
Okay, I'll make a motion to renew the VFW's liquor license. Second it.
Okay. Most been made in second. VFW liquor license renewal. All of those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Okay, here's the last one. On a Board of Appeals and Equalization Appeals Meeting, which is Thursday, April the fourteenth, and that is at five P M, I believe.
You don't need any action on, this this.
Well, this is information.
Yeah, just information, right?
Was that, did we do this? Was I here for one of these? Is this kind of the same thing? That's the same thing, okay?
Annual meeting where property owners can come and ask if their valuations of their properties be
Yeah.
By the county assessor's office.
Yeah, okay.
Sometimes there's nobody here, the county will be here also.
Yeah.
And usually.
I can't remember that.
They run the whole, pretty much the whole show, so.
Yeah, I think we only had like two, two people last year or something, and that worked bad.
There's a high probability there will be some people here this year.
This year, yeah, I expect it. Okay. I guess that's it for new business. We can go into other business, schedule of upcoming meetings. Board of Apparel Appeal and Equalization is Thursday, April the fourteenth, five P M. And that's uh that's for council members to be there. K M U meeting is Tuesday, April the nineteenth at two P M. Molly, do you think you can make that one?
I can, you?
Yeah. Try, okay.
No. I am in Mexico.
I just talked to you Sunday, and you were in Kentucky, right?
Okay, well, it was nice talking to you from Kentucky.
Oh, I feel bad. I could probably do Zoom, could I do Zoom, I don't?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we can do Zoom.
Okay, get out of Zoom, I could.
Yeah, we can set up any meeting.
You're hooked now. Okay. E D A meeting is Tuesday, April the twenty-sixth at eight A M, and that's here at uh City Hall. Next city council meeting will be Tuesday, May the tenth at seven P M.
Just sort of clear E D A, city council, does go to those?
Um, not the regular ones, no.
No, so now, okay.
I get you off the hook, okay?
You already have two council people on there, so.
So, quorum. Okay, we'll go with council and general staff of comments. And I guess we will start out with city attorney, or yeah, city attorney Scott.
I have nothing further, thank you, mayor.
Okay. How about the city engineer?
Nope, nothing for me.
No, he's getting off the hook. How about you, Mark?
I know, nothing.
I know Holly doesn't have anything to say, she just smiled, so we'll let that go. Molly Ryan. Mary Bailey.
I don't think so.
Geez, you ladies are quiet. Dan, speak up.
Nope, I'm listening to the phone.
Storms.
Okay.
I have nothing.
And I'm gonna follow suit too. We'll all uh call it quits and uh, you know, so we need an adjournment. Anybody in?
Make a motion for adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, most been made in second to adjourn the meeting.
Was it supposed to come early?
No, I don't.